Um, you've you've all seen the town side and the shared side. Uh, and I know you've all had at least some access to the school. Um. If you if you vote it tight, if you're comfortable, if you'd rather wait till Monday.
I apologize. Which article, Chris?
Article four.
For the budget.
The advisor did review it, finished his review last night and then voted uh rec- to recommend it by vote today to nothing. Paul, yeah, I said that this board has all of the municipal side. You have had access to some school materials and they did finish it last night. Uh, they just finished a week ago. Their budget. Um, and um. Wanted to sue her. The advisory was.
So how does the board feel about, I know we've gotten presentations on the operating budget. It doesn't seem like there's been any changes really, um. How does the board feel about voting in at this point? Any questions, discussion?
Um, I went through the budget. Kristen, I spent some time together on it. I feel. You you know, comfortable where the departments are. I will say again, I think we need to continue to fund facilities and um. We're gonna, you know, pledge to take care of our buildings. We have to fund to take care of our buildings. Um, I will say on the school side, I I was watching capital last night, not advisory. Um, I hope that they have. You know, their budget completed. They did have a public hearing and voted on a budget without FTEs. Or enrollment figures, um, and I've been asking for that and it's not ready. It's not ready. Did they have it last night?
Last night.
Okay, so I'll go back to the schools to get it, um. And I know they were trying to close the gap on uh. The bus lease.
And I'll be coming back to you folks for a potential ask on this special education stabilization fund. That won't happen further.
Yeah.
Probably till the late meeting in May.
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
I'm okay.
You're okay? All right?
I'm okay.
All right, all those in favor of recom- oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion to recommend article for the operating budget to town meeting.
Make the motion, recommend an article four.
Your second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, Chris, let's move to the next.
Article six, um. Uh, the the only change to this was was adding the amount of transfer to the 3EB. Fifty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, we had the other. Advisor recommended this by a vote of eight to nothing.
Okay, are there any comments or discussion?
I would move to approve article six.
Your second.
All right, Chris has moved to recommend article six to town meeting. Any further, and Paul seconded, any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Article eight, uh, Capital did get through a lot of it last night, though that a lot of them monitored these meetings. Um. The question is, do you want, would you rather have someone from Capital come to the meeting next Monday to talk through this, or are you prepared to vote on it?
Um. So just one quick, I I think we need to hold, Chris, on the item nineteen, the town hall roof. They have two twenty-five in there because we assumed that there was a hundred sitting out there, but we actually need to. Allocate it as three twenty-five. In order to encompass that one hundred, is that correct?
They're planning on Capital's meeting Monday night to do that adjustment.
Okay, so let's, let's just put a pin on that. They just need to vote the correct amount. Um.
Nineteen.
For the roof, yep. And then the other issue that I wanted to bring up is, um, I did review, I was watching the Capital meeting last night and one of the issues that. Um. I thought the select board might have some interest in revisiting is the MAB study, the architectural access study for approximately twenty thousand dollars. I asked Capital their sentiments. They were all unanimously in favor of that. If the board was so predisposed, I wasn't sure if we wanted any discussion to. Put that on the warrant for consideration, which. Maybe needless because we may have existing ADA grant money anyway, but until we do, we don't. Um, so we might just want to do that in the abundance of caution if the board wants to have that study.
We make a motion?
At what?
Yeah, so, yeah, so Paul and I met yesterday afternoon with Glenn Pratt. Katie, I I apologize, I don't remember her last name, from um. The Historical Commission and um.
Peter Longley.
Peter Longley and Clark Brewer. And um, Peter had some great insight on it. He actually emailed us today, three references. Who could do this study and he felt pretty confident they could get it done in May. Um, and it's just, it's just have in, it's from M A A B um. To determine ADA and we think it's an important part of. Planning post. Town meeting. For town hall, so so that we know if we hit certain, you you know, triggers, what we're looking at. So I would be in favor of it and if we can do it sooner than town meeting.
Sounds like if we can find the money, it sounds like the board wants to move forward on it, but if we can't, then we have to.
Show me.
Hope town meeting. Chris, Jack, do you have any discussion? No?
None.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't we vote right now? Everything except for, unless someone has a question, article nineteen, I sat through. The multiple meetings and hours of Capital, I know Ellen did, so. We might be able to answer any questions if anyone has it. I feel comfortable voting these, um. So we'll extract nineteen and then we'll do a subsequent vote on the MAB study, just for, to keep it clean. Um, does anyone have any questions on projects one through twenty-five?
No, but excluding nineteen.
Excluding nineteen because we have to change the amount.
I I just also want to be clear that the funding mechanism for the last three articles of state, special staff, last three projects of special stabilization. Just sort of been interested.
Any questions, Jim? All right, so would someone make a motion then to move the capital improvements budget, except for art, uh, item nineteen, the town hall roof to be corrected? Um, to recommend it to town meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, so then now let's do the subsequent motion on the MAB study, um. Uh, would someone like to move to recommend as a new item in the. Capital improvements budget, uh, MAB study for twenty thousand dollars for Capital to consider.
I would make that motion to approve the MAB study, twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous vote.
We're going to talk.
That's good. Oh.
No, it's a fire suppression.
Do you want to raise something?
Yeah, I'd like to see vote, and if we had a cost on. The design, when you spoke to Michelle about about the fire suppression system. In the old town hall. Um. If there's a cost, and what we could do to maybe move that forward, um.
It was forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So the the challenge.
That was the study, right?
That was the study. Um, and the the challenge Capital budget has is the thirty percent trigger. On the nine hundred eighty-six thousand dollar valuation, current assessment. Of forty-one Highland AV, that the roof will trigger the thirty percent. And there's no room to add the forty-five thousand. I don't think they conceptually disagree with it, but until we get, um.
Appraisal.
An appraisal, and we know, we know what it is. However, I I reread. CMR.
Five two one.
Five twenty-one, three point three point three, and up to five hundred thousand dollars, roofs are exempt. You can spend up to five hundred thousand. And not trigger the thirty percent. If you spend it on roofs, electrical. The the language is really funny. You kind of have to read it out loud, and I read it out loud to, to um, Jack and Chris while we were waiting. So even if the valuation stays at nine hundred eighty-six thousand. The roof and the design, because it's less than five hundred thousand, won't trigger.
The problem is three point three two says if work performed, including exempted work. Amounts to thirty percent or more of the full fair and cash value of the of the building, the entire building is required to comply. It's weird, it exempts it, but then.
It comes back.
As to the thirty percent, and so that's.
That's the.
The tricky wonky part.
Michelle did contact the board and they gave that interpretation.
Okay, okay, good, all right.
Yeah.
Basically, what he said too is MAB will go through basically with they with they um, tape measure.
Yeah.
And. You know, if we meet, we may already be meeting certain requirements as well, so I guess it's basically post, post MAB, um.
The real question is, what's the value of the building? Like, what, what does that come back, what does the IG come back and say? If it's replacement value, we know the replacement value is millions upon millions, and so. The, I guess the question is, we could put it on the warrant and see if we can get a decision during May, and if we get a decision during May. Then we make a decision at town meeting. We can either yank it or we can move forward. If we don't feel comfortable because we don't know the value, then we could make a, you know, decision.
But you you mean for the study, the forty-five thousand?
Yeah, for the study, like if, 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 let's say we make some progress in the interim and we figure out we can do replacement value and then it becomes a good point.
Right. Or if we can't. You just, we just don't do the study and the money reverts back to the stabilization fund.
Yeah, or we could take it off the warrant. We could, we could have a motion that takes it off the warrant. If we learn. But if we don't put it on now.
We don't, yeah.
We also can put it on later.
And that's what I'm concerned about this doing, um. Between the fire suppression and the HVAC. Right? Is at least having. Figures, because that's what we discussed, is matter getting. To a degree, working in conjunction with maybe our. Future working.
Right.
Now, um.
So again, I think if if you guys want to do the designs and the studies to be able to have the information to price out, now is the time to do it.
I would recommend doing it.
I would too.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think then we know forty-five thousand for fire suppression. If I recall correctly. Michelle. Said that there was previously a seventy-nine thousand dollar study figure provided by JRA. That was back to November and we were contemplating these issues. Um. I mean, the problem is we're doing this pretty fast. We could start with fire suppression and go. There and see what comes up.
Yeah.
Well, I also think.
Let me just start there.
The reason I'm saying that is if we. With town hall, if we wind up working with. The nonprofits. You know, it gives them a tangible and they may step up to the plate. That's why I'm going to advocate for putting it in. Um. So it shows, it's showing good faith on the town's part and hopefully at the end of the day, we'll have a town hall that's functional. Uh, for whatever purposes, purpose for, and um.
So Paul, do you want to make a motion to include a forty-five thousand dollar line item for the fire suppression study?
I'd like, and how much for the, for the, would be HVAC?
I I don't know, this is.
Well, I'll make a motion to include the forty-five thousand dollar, um, fire suppression study.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 So the wild card is the HVAC. Um, we don't know what the exact design amount for that would be. And. It strikes me, Capital will want something grounded in some reality to vote.
I just agree with that, but what do we have? I mean, personally. We can, we get someone in, uh, just to estimate. A replacement?
Well, the, the, yeah. Are you talking, but there, there is no HVAC, there's only heat in the historic structure, so is this, is this the whole building or, or, or? Is it one system? That's the challenge again, so. We don't know what the scope of the study is. The fire for the historic structure, you know what it is, right? It's already defined. Uh, even the roof, you know what it is, it's defined. The M A B states to some extent. HVAC just isn't fully defined, so.
Well, I I would think. In, Ellen, shoot me if I'm wrong.
I'll shoot you anyway.
Good enough, I can do that. Um. Is that we would price out probably. On that. Two distinct systems, to a degree. You know, not knowing what's, what could happen. But you do break up the building into, say, basically two zones. Um, the old and the new, because we know that we have window units in the old unit. Um, in the annex, I apologize, and um.
But I I honestly, Paul, I I would push the HVAC. To the working group, to the bigger plan of what we're going to do.
I'd go along with that.
And um, not try to jam it in here where we really don't have enough, because we can, we can send. You know, Chris and Michelle saying, okay, do this and do this and do this, and still not have it fleshed out intelligently enough for town meeting.
I was just, so we have a seventy-nine thousand dollar. Um, guess, older estimate, right, Chris?
Yeah, it's my understanding.
All right, so we.
No, that was accessibility, that was my note.
It was multiple.
Multiple different.
All right, so Ellen?
Yes.
You know, working with, with that, I agree.
Yeah.
All right, so we're, we're in a range.
So running, so. We're trying to get. Accessibility. Fire suppression. And push forward on the roof.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's a, that's a good start.
I think it's a great start.
Yeah. Okay, um. All right, so we'll move past the capital budget items.
Article one.
But we'll have to send fire suppression back to them for a vote.
And and.
And the MAB study.
Michelle's watching, Michelle's watching us.
Michelle, can you do that?
I think she.
I don't blame her, I don't blame her.
I'll talk to her tomorrow. Um. The next one that needs to be voted on is article eleven. These are these two new funds we talked about for library programs and specialized inspection, library program inspections. Uh, the 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 spending cap limits are now five thousand for library programs and fifty for specialized inspections. And I'll go get, we'll leave that, but if there's ever a big bill, it may be thousands of dollars worth. Specialized inspection, so. Um, again, it's not, it's not budgeting, that's just the amount of money that flows through, right? Advisory recommended.
Hey, any discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion to recommend the article titled Creation of Revolving Fund for Library Programs and Specialized Inspection Town Meeting?
I would make a motion for article eleven, Creation of Revolving Fund for Library Programs and Specialized Inspections.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Um. Article, um. It's gonna be ready for Monday, it's article fifteen. Chairman, Tom Riordan, CPC is ready to come in front of you Monday night. Um. Could come tonight, so uh. If you could hold for his presentation, or if you all feel comfortably, you can vote on it.
Um, why don't we come back to that, because Monday might be a very busy night, so, well, why, why don't we talk about it right now, um? I've seen some of these, I'm aware of some of these projects. How are others feeling about these projects? Do, keeping in mind that Monday's the last day to close the warrant, if. We're already inclined, we might say Mr. Riordan, trip over to the select board, but if we have questions, certainly he can come on Monday.
As a member of CPC, I'm inclined to approve.
Oh, yeah, Paul, that's right, yeah, can we give us any?
Now, what we've done is, uh, in last meeting is, again. Going with the. Space, the same stuff, except we're adding the water, um.
Hydration station.
Thank you very much, hydration stations.
Which I think is great, yeah.
And we're trying to, and that's probably a far and field up at Milliken, so. Been approved, so I mean, um. Everything that I can see here, I I would make a motion.
May I just ask one question, please?
Sure.
Like, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with, and I'm not challenging what it is, I'm just curious, what is the Elder Affairs pergola project at World Cup?
That's right down, it's what the building, and I I voted for it, so that CPC is putting. Pergola outside so we can get some of the people outside, like in the, in the common area behind the windows.
Okay.
Building a pergola that they will have.
Some shade.
In shade. Bump over that's retractable, but to get out and sit in the sun.
Okay, thank you.
I was fully on board with that.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion? To approve these CPC items?
I would make a motion to approve article.
Second.
And when we say approve, Tracy, for the minutes, we mean recommend to town meeting, yes, yeah. Okay. Um, we have a motion and a second, recommend for approval. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Uh, Chris, can you thank Mr. Riordan?
Tommy doesn't need to.
Certainly.
Always off the hook. All right.
Article sixteen through twenty-two are the zone.
And no one has voted yet? No, planning board, no, and?
Well, planning board, I guess technically has, because they're recommending some of this. Um.
Are there any the planning board is not recommending? Don't they?
Once you're in front of your, they recommend all of them.
Yeah, they have to recommend.
We have the votes from them, yeah. But they did, they did vote, I don't know if they're all unanimous.
Okay, all right.
I think the, um. Bar was not unanimous.
No, they vote, they want to put that to a study. The F A R?
Yeah.
Always came off the ones. It came off.
Okay. So why don't we do one at a time? Advisory's not going to vote. The planning board, um, at least a majority voted to move this forward, which is why we're looking at it right now, because they have to. Um, so article sixteen, reorganization of zoning bylaw. This is the. O- organizational. Structure, um, moving twenty-two into twelve. Following from, uh, last November's organizational efforts. Does anyone have any? Changes, question? All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve articles, recommend article sixteen to town meeting? Recommend for approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, would anyone like to talk more?
No.
Nope, okay. Motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right, article seventeen, same drill. These are amendments to article three consolidation. Mr. Callahan went through this pretty extensively last time. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to recommend approval for town meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. Does anyone want to have any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Article eighteen, these are amendments to article three consolidation of districts in the harbor. We talked about how the harbor has multiple different districts. That we are trying to now put into one. Village, Harbor Village Business District, um. Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
That's the most clear cut of them all. I'll make a motion to approve article eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, article nineteen, this is consolidation of the village districts, of which there are many throughout the town. Um, again, this is ministerial. Organizational. Yet important, um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to recommend for approval.
All right, this is. Okay. For article nineteen, um, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, article twenty is the implementation of the MBTA communities legislation. This is the housing voice legislation we're trying to implement. Um, we know this has been controversial in other towns. We also know in our town, um, where. I suppose in a certain way fortunate to have a parcel of land that is relatively, um. Uh, you know, perhaps easier to consider developing than other towns of faith, um. Because there's already large developments like the preserve, um, in that same area. I I realize that doesn't necessarily address the impact issues, but, um.
It's my big worry.
Yeah.
I got it.
All right, would anyone like to have any discussion?
Again, I, can we, are we able to put this off, this one?
I don't think we should.
You know, I'm all for. Obviously, but I'm worried about. Is the impact on co-hasset, three A, the traffic, um. You know, did other towns doing it? And my biggest concern is the infrastructure and the impact on the town.
There's nothing that will change, though, between now and November, if you put this off on that point. It's, you're right, you're not wrong. Um, it is a risk that we all face with multi, multi-family housing. The question is. Whether we want to move forward and whether the town votes for it, and if we don't. What are the ramifications, including being sued by the AD and losing state funding?
And what money, Chris? It's chapters? Ninety money?
No, it's a, it's a, it's an expanding list of things. Right now, it's mostly of the mass works program. But. And they can always add things to it.
And, and I would also just chime in that this would create the zoning that would allow this type of housing. Most of these parcels are already developed.
Right.
So this is something that, uh, if a developer did choose to move forward. And follow through in the zoning, uh, it would be over a period of time, it would be gradual. Uh, it it would not be all of this being developed as multi-family housing. Relatively quickly, because that's just impossible, so it creates the possibility that time in the future. Be developed as described.
Um. I've followed this and this type of legislation for quite some time. Um, I think this in co-hasset. Where, this is a pretty good. Working around of this. What I don't like about this is the coercion of the state of usurping your local control. And. So I'm I'm torn. I think we've crafted a very good way to deal with this. But we already ourselves have worked to create affordable housing. I was on the Affordable Housing Committee, so it's very difficult for me to look at this, because conceptually. I'm really opposed to the principle of unfunded mandates and, um. You know, we, we are a town, we are a state of towns. Towns should have some autonomy, so I'm not very happy with the whole concept of this. Um. But I do think that the, we have crafted a way to make this palatable for co-hasset. But. I I just cannot, I I think this is a good solution. But I don't like, um, unfunded mandates from the state. So. I would abstain from voting.
You don't have. A reason to abstain.
I mean abstain, I, I, I would, but I don't have to vote.
You'd, you'd vote no.
No, I have the option of, of not voting on it. Which I choose to do.
All right, so why don't we take a vote and let's make it clear for the warrant, because we'll have to record, Chris, sorry, do you want?
I was going to make the motion.
Please.
Uh, move to recommend for approval? Article twenty?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's do roll call vote in light of. Mr. Creighton?
Um, I vote to abstain.
Asmar?
Aye.
Mr. Plex?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
I'm going to say aye to this, because it is covered. But I have my reservations.
Aye, so we have four zero one. Okay, thank you. Thank you, I know it's hard, um, I get the issue. All right, um, I'm going to recommend, well, let's, let's go through article twenty-one. These are the amendments to article seven parking. I know this was the one that. Um, the select board had questions about and concerns with respect to, right now, it is one point five spaces per unit.
Article.
I'm sorry, Paul, it is article twenty-one, yep, right there, so it's a big one, it's the parking. It's the second page. So, um, Chris, can you convey what we've learned, because I know the select board had questions about, can we change this? Or do we have to use the language referred out?
So if there was a minor change. Uh, you could make minor changes, it'd be making a substantive change, really should wait for town meeting floor, it's from. It said, the board also has the luxury, uh, this, this, the choice not to include it into the warrant, if you don't support it, don't want to put it in front of the rules. You don't have to put it on the warrant. If you do, and if you want to make any substantive amendment, any change number breaks, basically, it's considered substantive. Um. You, you'd have to make that motion on the floor. Does that summarize enough?
Thank you, thank you.
So if we took it off the warrant, then the parking requirement remains at one.
Whatever it is now.
Whatever it is now.
Which is one space per unit versus if we put it on, then we propose it at one point five spaces per unit. Which is not the one per bedroom. That we wanted, but it still is an improvement.
It's a step forward.
To the current regulation, so I. I think that that plus the waiver issue, um, was another. Um. Issue that we were concerned about.
So if we did want to address the waiver issue and only the waiver issue. That's.
We'd put this on and make a motion at town meeting. Yeah. So how do people, I, I know people have some concerns, including with waiver?
Uh.
You mean with the select board, I'm sorry, Chris. With the select board having that?
Uh, uh, you know, based on our last discussion.
Now, the select board with the planning board having that, those waivers.
We don't have it, they have it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I I think the strategy then is to put it on the warrant and then have a discussion about the waiver at town meeting.
Yep.
Because I do think the waiver is, uh, entirely inappropriate, it invalidates the rest of the article, in my opinion.
Okay. All right, would you like to make a motion to put it on, Chris?
I would move to recommend this article for approval.
Is there a second?
Would it be a caveat to that?
No.
That comes to town meeting.
That's a motion, town meeting.
I'll second.
All right. Paul, would you like to discuss anymore? I think procedurally, our only option, if you want to do a caveat or changes, to do a motion at town meeting.
Yeah.
You would have support.
No, I know, but I'm just wondering why we, why, 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 why can't we put it on there?
It's a substantive change.
Is there, is there any better public hearing? And a substantive change to a, you'd have to have another public hearing.
There's a special law as it relates to zoning.
But we do have the option at town meeting.
At town meeting, make the motion.
To, to, to move it to two?
Yes.
Okay.
To our motion.
We could move it to two. And we could also strike the language that effectively provides planning board with the ability to approve whatever number of spaces they want within their authority. Yeah, well, okay. I think those would be the issues to be discussed at town.
Prepare for a town meeting, vote my support.
I'll, I, two.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll handle it as we go. Um, okay. More to come there. Let's see. Now we are at Article twenty-two. All right, um, uh, these are amendments to the dimensional regulations. Oh, this is the buffer zone, the border zone. Okay. Are there any questions about this? So would anyone like to make a motion to recommend approval of town meeting for the border zone?
I would move to recommend approval.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye. All right. Now we're at the noise control bylaw. And um, I know that there were some questions from advisory about this, right?
Yes, I was more about just ha- having, it was more about just having a more, a more robust conversation with the select board in advance of town meeting with an expectation that there could be more conversation. So I think they just wanted to hear, I explained. Um, and they wanted to hear more from the select board. So if, if someone could again, I don't, I don't think, and again, I, Ellen was the audience as well. I, I don't think there was any, any real opposition. I think it was just more of a, you know, to, to make, to, just more of a desire to get it fully baked.
So Chris, we keep seeing this language that we keep requesting the change for, and this is under section one seventy dash seven six. Any activity which is the subject of a decision of any town board having authority over activity, including without limitation licenses issued by the Cohasset Select Board. I mean, the concern is if the planning board or ZBA or a town official, um, while it would be a board in this instance, this was really meant for the liquor and entertainment licenses? This was not meant for the current broad permission that is leading us to this current situation with the construction?
And I'm going to for the couple of times that I, I think when I say that, I don't mean here. I mean, trying to get, uh, language control through council, council office. So
Okay.
If you want to make an amendment right now, I could fix it right now and we're done. Uh, because the advisor's not voted on this.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think it's an amendment. Uh, well, it's a, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I think what we wanted to say, and I need to go back, but any activity which is subject to, uh, which is the subject of a decision of the Cohasset Select Board as to licenses and permits, because it, is it an entertainment license or an entertainment permit that we grant?
Oh. Oh.
License.
So, okay, so we're talking about, um, maybe any activity which is the subject of a license issued by the Cohasset Select Board. Unless there's some other board issuing.
You give an event permit too. And by the way, entertainment licenses are one thing, but events can make noise. I mean, people just gathering can make noise, so.
Yeah, I get that.
So, um, license, I would recommend you say license and permits, just to be a comprehensive.
Well, so seven speaks to the parades, music festivals, public, and for which granted a permit, so.
Do you want to just get rid of six entirely then?
Well, I think we need the liquor licenses.
Okay.
Or not the liquor licenses, um. Uh, y- y- we have like the music circus. Like, is that a permit or a license? This is what I'm trying to figure out, like where exactly, um, that fits in.
Not entirely sure, and I think that's why the challenge is, I mean, he doesn't have anything like the music circus when they drafted this, right? So, um.
Isn't that the subject of a license?
Yeah, I mean, there are license, I mean, there are, there are license for a lot of things.
The language for six is problematic too, because it's, it's not saying that the decision was to approve the activity. It's just saying that the board has authority over the activity.
How about any activity which is approved by a license or permit issued by the profits level?
Solves it.
I'm good.
Any activity which is approved pursuant to a license or permit issued by the Cohasset Select Board.
Arguably redundant with seven, but that's okay.
Yep. Yeah, just to make crystal.
All right, got it.
And then, um, if we scroll down to V, A, B, I think, I think we said we want to strike that because we've already addressed public safety. Fire, law enforcement, vehicle in emergency performance, safety, blah, blah, blah.
Well, those are noises that, 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 that they give off. The emergency noise might be, you have to maintain it, right? So, uh, law enforcement order vehicle performance with its duties, and a fire ambulance or public works creating sound performance of its, of its duties. It could be a private company too, right? It could be, we could be bringing in a private, I mean, again, I'm just giving you a hypothetical.
So, so for example, up on Jerusalem Road from Linden Drive, southbound, the gas company has been there and has, has dug trenches to replace a hundred and ten year old gas line. And six or seven of its homes don't have power, so they're supplying a generator to power those homes, which creates a noise which can be heard, you know. I don't, I don't know if it's still going on. I know it was there for a couple of years, but, yeah, so how would that fit in?
I would argue that part ten, activities of temporary duration during a time of emergency conducted by a utility company to repair maintain public utility infrastructure.
Okay. We talked about that last week. Uh, what we're really getting at is building permits. We don't want building permits to deviate. This is the whole point of why we're doing this noise bylaw, and then we have an exception for a potential building permit. Like, this is the problem that we've tried to fix.
Problem is, we don't have this, no regulation at all right now. So this is, so I understand, if you understand, I think, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll take that, make the changes to six and that stuff.
All right. With those changes, um, are folks comfortable? I mean, we can still go before advisory, but we have to vote before next Wednesday.
I'm fine with it. We want to wait a minute for Mr. Grady?
Yes, yes. So, so while we're waiting, and I don't disagree with striking B, but what are the unintended consequences?
Of striking B?
Yeah. I mean, for good cause, like, like, what is good cause? What is a?
Yeah, I think we're probably talking about circumstances that we'll know when they happen. I, I think that, that, that was, I, I gather, hand put in a suggesting case with an understanding that an enforcement official, only for good cause, which is a fairly high standard, would, would grant it, um, so, and it could be, maybe it could be environmental regulations or something. I mean, it could be something, you know, that said, if that happens, you could.
But it appears to me that this could be misinterpreted as I have a building permit, therefore I can make the noise.
The, 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 I hear you. So I said you could strike it, and if it's a problem, you gotta amend it.
And I'm advocating striking.
Right, right.
Yeah.
The unintended consequences are, I'm not sure yet. Uh, so.
Well, if there's some environmental disaster, then thirteen will probably be triggered. It will be preempted by state and federal law.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I, I think, I, I, I agree. I think there's probably enough cover in that. Um, and I guess.
We're gonna always change it too in November, something crazy is going on. All right. So we're gonna strike B, we're gonna change, um, six. Would anyone like to make a motion with those amendments we just discussed?
I would move that we recommend for the approval with the changes as discussed to six and B.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right. Now we're at the citizens petition. Um, did we already vote on the water bottles? Oh, no, we were waiting for advisory.
Advisory voted, um, uh, eight to nothing to support it.
Okay. So would anyone like to have, we did have a pretty robust discussion on Tuesday. Would anyone like to have further discussion before we vote? Would anyone, um, like to make a motion to recommend?
I would move that we recommend this article for approval at town meeting.
I would second. All right. All those in favor, leave a Yes, this is a roll call vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Let the record reflect, Chris and Jean. Um, all those opposed, please, um, well, let me do it. Mr. Grady?
Uh.
We gotta do it the same way.
Okay, raise your hand. Yeah, if you're opposed. I just want to make sure Tracy can see. Okay. So it's two to three. Okay, um, I just raised a hand. Yep. All right. Citizens petition, see? I brought, I brought that, look at Chris and I, we're telling the line. Jack, true to form.
However.
We can still be friends.
That's all right, but I couldn't find, I looked everywhere, pure water. And this is actually carbonated water.
Here, but see, okay, because I'm educated, I want to do my bottle, so I come, I grab a glass of water or a cup of water.
This is.
I'm not picking on you.
Does anyone, you want us to make sure that it fixes?
No, no, can we just keep moving?
Article twenty-five.
Please, I'm gonna get.
Citizens petition, town hall rehab. So, okay. We've done a lot. I mean, we've essentially done, I think, let's see, new sprinkler, fire suppression. So we're proposing the roofing. We're proposing more than they're proposing. Um, we're proposing the roofing. Um, we don't have enough information for the sprinkler. Um, no, we're proposing the fire suppression design, which is the necessary precursor under state law. We're not proposing HVAC because that's not ready yet. Um, order relive the entry brick walkway, which actually may be something we learn more about through the accessibility study in terms of what needs to happen.
I mean, if it, if it needs to be fixed, they quoted twelve grand. Couldn't Nick just put it on his docket to fix? I mean, does it have to be?
It could. Outside of this article.
Yeah.
We don't need this article to do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying he does a normal course of business.
Well, that, I think that's, that's absolutely where I am.
Yeah.
I would say.
Might absolutely do these things in normal course of business, or not to, based on its circumstances.
Right.
I would just make a motion not to recommend.
All right. We have a motion, um, not to recommend.
This is tricky.
Do we have a second?
Get a further discussion.
Yes.
I would point out that I think, um, I, I think a lot of the things in this petition are, are admirable. And, but I think that we've already addressed them. I mean, this really is essentially moot, and the points that need to be moved forward, we're already doing. So, um, and there's no funding for this, so this is unworkable. Um, and it further complicates, and there's things that are already being done, so it's moot. So I would support not moving forward on it.
Sorry.
Are, are we obligated to vote on it? I mean, we could defer, we could put in, defer to town meeting, but do we have an obligation to vote on every article?
Clearly, I mean, the, the, the board, prior boards have said that, uh, that they felt an obligation for it. Now, there have been times when the board has deferred because it wasn't, like, there was a, when it was a sense of the meeting, the board didn't
Right, right.
But on something like this, which involves a concrete policy act, which in the past have started to say, we need it's our obligation. You're not legally obligated to do it. It was more of a, this is our responsibility as a board. That's, I'm just telling you a pass.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think we should vote on it, and it's a tricky one because we're, we want to do the things that are listed, but not as bound by this article. Is where I think we are. So where that puts me is I will likely vote no. But it'll, it'll require some explanation at town meeting, I think.
Well, I, I think that's kind of where I was, where I was getting to is, is, you know, whether there's a, a oh five vote on the warrant and the motion or not, I do agree that, you know, we have, we have to state our position on why. I guess, um, that this doesn't, this, if this were to pass overwhelming, if this were to pass a town, on town meeting floor, it doesn't obligate us to do anything.
Because there's no funding.
Because there's no funding for it.
Although I suspect the petitioners are, are gonna put some sort of motion that they have yet to identify the funding source at town B, for town B.
And I believe that we've already addressed some of the key issues in this. You know, by putting it up for the fire suppression, for the, uh, roof. And, um, so where I would vote no on this, it's not, because I don't agree with doing some of the work and getting it done, but working more collegially with some.
Right.
But I wouldn't recommend this because, uh, just the, again, the base financing and, and.
Well, the reality is we're not gonna do two roofs on town hall. We can barely do one, never mind two. We're not gonna do two sprinkler systems. We're not gonna re-level the brick walkway twice. Like, there's just practical, like, a lot of this is nullified or has no funding source. Or is not ready for a variety of reasons like we talked about with the HVAC.
That's why I vote no. That's, you know, again, Chris is right, but we are addressing the issues that I think we have to move forward with town hall.
I think one thing, and Ellen, I, I think what I'm hearing is, and I know this may be unique, but we could put a paragraph underneath our select board recommendation, if we want to come up with some language for Monday and say, here's why we're not recommending it because we're doing X, Y, Z, because we want to work with, you know, representatives of different groups that have a variety in, you know, we could put something succinct out there right under here to explain select board's recommendation and explanation, um, that I think may help clarify.
I agree with that. Because we clearly have shown by what we have moved forward in our actions that really the thrust of this, we agree with and we're moving forward, this would just tie our hands and so I think we should have kind of a signing. It's a great idea, Jean.
Okay, so why don't I recommend that we do the vote now, so we can at least move through that, and then we'll do, we'll work on the paragraph in the interim for Monday. All right. Would anyone?
So what are we, what, voting on this, the subject of signing statement?
Yes, not, not to recommend.
Not to recommend.
Not to recommend. All right.
Paul already has a motion.
Paul, we have a motion and a second.
I could amend that. Make a motion, but with the addition of the caveat. No explanation if I have to, but I won't.
Well, we could just add it in later.
Jean, if I could just clarify, Paul's motion was not to recommend.
Not to recommend.
So if I vote aye.
Then you're voting not to recommend.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second not to recommend.
God, I didn't hear a second.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, Chris, I thought, okay. Motion and a second not to recommend. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous not recommend. All right, um.
Can I just ask, just for clarity state, the last was a motion to recommend, and it was voted down two to three. For clarity on the motion, on the warrant, it might be easy to say, vote not to recommend. Vote not to recommend three to two. Um, because it, that's what it'll say on this. This would be a, a motion not to recommend five, five. Yeah, only because it's gonna be weird. Vote to recommend two to three. It'll look weird. Do you mind if I represent it that way?
Yeah.
That's what.
Your words, not anyway.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I should just vote, but I want to make sure. I think about the whole one. Different, no, actually, you've done it.
We've done everything except for the paragraph, and then we need the, the new, on the roof and, so that's it.
All right.
I'll, um, I'll take a stab at that article.
Be great. Maybe you and Paul, you guys want to work on it?
Town hall thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, because I think you have a good grasp on that. So, um, I don't think we have anything else, right? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
Ah, you.
Everyone, please vote aye.
You poor sneaky down there.
You got me. I stayed.